Call this meeting to order for the Sherburne School Committee at 5:30 PM on May 7th. First up, our community comments. Just Mega and Kristen. Mega or Kristen, community comments?
Nope.
Nope?
Meg is doing CSA.
No, Meg is doing CSA.
Yes.
Alright, cool. Next item up, as it comes back up, is the CSA update. Mega, thank you for joining us to provide a quick update.
Thank you for having me. I'll focus on updating you guys on the second half of this year and what's upcoming for the rest of this term. I believe the last time we chatted was October 17th. We've had a slew of successful events. The rebranded Monster Mash, which was also called the Halloween Harvest Fest, went off without a hitch. It was earlier in the day, outdoors, and we offered food trucks and snacks. Both the parents and students appreciated the earlier hours since it was all daylight outside for most of it. We may go back to calling it the Monster Mash due to student feedback on the new name being a bit of a mouthful. The other big new event we held this year was Glow Up with Your Grown-Up, which was a glow-themed party in March. It ended up coming right after International Night and the book fair, which affected attendance, but the smaller crowd made for a less chaotic event, especially since it was all in the dark. We heard really good feedback and the attendees really enjoyed the theme and the smaller crowd. We may use some of the feedback to inform our future events. We also had a very successful winter fundraiser. We raised about $15,000. We had a generous parent donor who matched donations halfway through the fundraiser, helping us get closer to our budgeted goal. We have also upped our rewards program where we partner with local businesses and restaurants to do a percentage share of proceeds for each fundraiser. We partnered with Biryani and Bread, Republic, Fiorella's Trattoria, Chipotle, and a local photographer to do personal photo shoots. We also had a successful Sherburne holiday stroll with local businesses offering a percentage of sales during a holiday weekend. The book rewards team held a new event dubbed Books and Bubbles in December at Aesop Spable in Holliston. A wine and books evening to mingle and purchase books with a percentage going to the CSA. The team also revamped the book fair to ensure every child receives a book. The team raised enough funds to get a book for every kid at Pine Hill and fulfill the majority of all teachers' wish lists. We will also be creating a book fund for future years with the remaining funds so we can continue to make the book fair easier for teachers and parents. Historically, it's been a bit of a confusing experience with some parents sending in cash and teachers navigating classroom bartering. So we hope to continue this streamlined process going forward. International Night was back this year, bigger and better. We had 25 countries represented versus 21 the year before. They added three live performances to the evening as well. The pride and excitement that everyone felt showcasing their cultures was evident in all the booths and we had a record number of attendees as well. We plan to continue this event with dedicated co-chairs and will continue to evolve the evening based on the extremely positive feedback from the community. The CSA also partnered with the Sherburne 350th Committee to run an art contest with the 5th grade, with the winner receiving a $50 gift card and their winning design to be featured on an exclusive sticker, also put in the time capsule and potential swag for the community to purchase. Tima Kadyuk won this contest and was celebrated at all-school meeting and will be featured at a future Sherburne Town Hall meeting as well. In lieu of the traditional end-of-year party, we will be celebrating our beloved Dr. Brown at a retirement party on June 7th, being held at Lookout Farm in Naedig. This will be open to current and past students and staff. Dr. Brown's Last Recession will have food, drinks, music, and more, plus lots of tears and hugs as we better off on farewell. And that's all I'm at liberty to say about that event. We were a little worried that the Last Recession may be morbid, but we meant it. Lastly, we'll be handing the reins of the CSA to our vice presidents Irene Sarantias-Vassili and Cara McDermott, who are already in the middle of recruiting and ensuring they have a full board when the next school year starts, especially since it's an auction year. It's been a great year serving as co-presidents of the CSA and an honor to work with this group and the entire CSA board and group of volunteers, all coming together to do their part for our kids. Thank you, guys.
Great.
Thanks, Maia.
Thanks, Maia. Does anybody have any questions, comments? Kristen? No? Good. Awesome. Yeah, Mega, thank you for that update. It was great. I think that the integration with, obviously, the administration and whatnot has been incredibly invaluable in helping make sure that a lot of this programming that supplements everything that's happening in the school is kind of well-integrated but also pulled off excellently. So I think tons of good feedback that I've heard anecdotally from a lot of the different events. So kudos, thank you. Great work.
Appreciate it. Yeah, thank you, guys.
Alright. Superintendent comments up next.
Alright, good evening. That's a tough act to follow with all those positive things happening at Pine Hill School. So many thanks to you, Mega and Ariana, for your leadership with the CSA and for all that you do for our students and our staff. I was a Pine Hill parent once and there was lots of great things offered by the CSA and it has just grown exponentially. So many more events, so many more opportunities for our students and families. So thank you. Just a few quick updates. The Challenge Success Conference was hosted here two weeks ago and it was great to showcase our K-12 Challenge Success program. We had, I think, nine other schools from the area join us, as well as our colleagues from Stanford who flew out to lead the day. And it was a great opportunity for us to showcase the work that we've done in the last decade. And we, each school had a table with their teams and they could pick one thing they were proud of working on this year and then showcase them. So we actually picked the nine best practices as a way to engage kids in the learning, which is part of, obviously, Challenge Success's mission. So then we had 90 seconds to present and then we could go visit other tables and learn from each other. And we are, you know, obviously being the first school district on the East Coast farther along in the process and we had so many new teams come up to us and say, "Wow, I can't believe you're doing engagement and all these great things in the classroom." And we had to explain to them that it's been a journey, that we've, you know, spent time working on homework and assessment and mindfulness and the start time and they'll get there too. But I think it was a great time to showcase all that we've done as a district and how we continue to grow in that realm. Other than that, we continue to negotiate with Unit B, which is our educational assistance. So we will continue working on that. Thank you to Becca for being on that negotiating team. Hiring continues. I won't steal the thunder. I'll let our building principals give you an update on that. And we have, what, five and a half weeks to go? Time is fun. Happy to take any questions or concerns. Otherwise, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Brown and Ms. Cullensford.
For the Challenge Success, was there anything coming in that was like, "Wow, there's some other cool stuff that other districts are doing"?
I think it was a reminder, actually, you know, this year has been going back to our roots. It was a reminder of what it was like 10 years ago when we started with Challenge Success. And luckily, this year, we just did another survey with our students in the middle school and high school about their sleep time, about their homework, about their stress, about expectations from parents. And so seeing other teams go through that for the first time and starting from scratch made us remember how important it is to go back and dig into the data as opposed to just taking it for granted and moving on. So it's actually inspired us to do some deep dives into the data with teachers and with students so they can help us understand the patterns that we're seeing and make sense of them and be able to support them. So I think that was pretty powerful. Anything else for me? Take it away, Dr. Brown.
Dennis, you asked if we would speak a little bit about the principal transition.
Yes.
And I'm so appreciative, Beth, that you were able and willing to make hiring decisions relatively early in the school year for a principal position. And in that, we have shared, we literally sit this close together in our shared office because of the cozy space at Pine Hill. Obviously, we've worked closely together for six years now. But since your hiring plan was revealed, we've had so much time to be able to think together for me to give some historical perspective. Allison is built and is building a dynamic new team and I am thrilled to see Pine Hill 2.0 growing. So with regard to all things for next school year, which is what school principals are deep into this time of year, Allison has taken the lead on everything. Hiring, you know, budget planning, scheduling, student placement, space reorganization. So I am figuring out my place in all that. I'm kind of the guide on the side at this point. But I'm going to turn it over to you because you have been deep in creating real... soliciting a lot of staff feedback so that she can make systems adjustments moving forward.
Yeah, and I think just to add on to that, like, I also feel very fortunate in that we share a close proximity to each other and that it's been able to hopefully be a really smooth transition for Pine Hill and that I've been able to, you know, gain and take as much as I can from Dr. Brown and then also look for feedback from staff as shifts and moving forward. The biggest thing, kind of an update on hiring, we are really deep in hiring season and I just want to start with, it's really encouraging that our hiring pools are so robust right now. I think when COVID hit, our hiring pools kind of took a hit. But for example, for one position, we had like 55 applicants for one position, which is great. So I'm excited for our kids because that means that we can hire the best of the best for them and not feel like, "Ooh, we have three candidates. I hope we can find someone that's good." So it's been really exciting as we put together different teams and the building has been gracious in that we have volunteers from all over for a part of our hiring committee, so really get a wide perspective on each team so that we can ensure, like, all voices are part of that conversation. So kind of a domino effect with Jen Ryan being appointed as the assistant principal and that we had a literacy coach vacancy. So we have hired for the literacy coach. We have hired for a librarian and that Ms. Lori Rine will be retiring in November. So those two positions went to internal candidates, which therefore opened up two teacher vacancies. So we just finished actually demo lessons today, which were outstanding. So we have two really great finalists that we're really excited about. We're running a really unique and outside perspective to our Pine Hill teachers. So I'm looking forward to them hopefully moving forward in that process. We have hired for preschool position counselor. We have a finalist demo lesson on Friday for our Spanish teacher position. So I'm really excited and eager about that. And then also have vetted candidates for our special ed building administration position. So we just launched that process this week. And so I look forward to creating like a comprehensive communication that I'll send out to families hopefully within the next two and a half-ish weeks to outline all those candidates so that everyone is in the loop about the new team and folks that we're bringing onboard and where kind of all the pieces fell. So we're really excited about all the hiring that's been going on.
As we do every year, Allison's put a lot of thought into moving some of our classroom teachers around for next year with an effort to, obviously, grow perspective, growth opportunities, and to build teaching teams. You know, in the old days, we all taught in our classrooms and our doors were closed and we were little microcosms. And if we were connected to others, great, but it wasn't really a requirement. And teams that inspire each other and share practices and are student-centered are, is the goal. So again, that information will be shared as well. But there's probably seven or eight teachers that will have an opportunity to spread their wings at different grade levels next year.
Yep, so I'll lump that in with the communication for hiring. So it's all cohesive and, yeah. So just wanted to finalize a couple of our finalists before sending that out so that it's comprehensive for everyone in the community.
I guess I have one, maybe two questions. So I know this year, we've had some challenges with our Spanish teachers. We've had a fair amount of turnover with counselors over the past however many years and in the special ed department. And so I'm curious, as you think about next year and how we set people up for success, are there lessons learned from some of those experiences that, you know, I don't know, maybe pairing people up or I don't even know what they might be. But in particular, in the special ed group, that's a group of students who really struggle with change. I'm curious how you're thinking about that world.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I kind of think two things. One, I think the process is really important and that we expanded the process a little bit. So like ensuring for all the positions, including that of special ed, include like demo lessons, which is, most importantly, that they're with students.
Yeah.
So that's like an essential component for any position that we're hiring. We're ensuring that that happens to make sure that, you know, you can interview really well, but like, what do you look like in front of our kids? So really making our process a little bit more comprehensive in that. I think sometimes with certain positions, it's easy to just be like, "I'm sure they interviewed so great." So that really, really digging into reference checks is really important for me. So I think also that's something where, like, for example, I mean, as you can tell, we have a lot of positions we're hiring for and it can be easy to just be like, "Yep, I'm sure, yep, okay, yep, sounds good." Kind of check the box. But I'm really ensuring that I'm digging into that to really make sure there is, you know, for example, someone that I was vetting and reference checks didn't go as planned and I said, "Okay, we're going to go back to the drawing board because I need to, like, feel 100% that this person is best for our kids." And then as far as supporting them when they get started, I think pairing them with a mentor in the building, it doesn't necessarily have to be a job-alike, but someone that can help grow them as an educator in the building because they'll get to work with job-alike colleagues in that position. So just having a broader lens on, you know, if I hire a counselor, it doesn't have to be a counselor who is their necessarily building mentor, but who's going to be a match for that person to help them gain the perspective of Pine Hill and really grow them as an educator. So I'm looking forward to kind of like that mentoring aspect and really ensuring those people are set up for success. The other kind of shift I'm hoping to make is meeting with anyone who's a new educator in the building and making that a more consistent practice where we meet monthly just to talk about the building, talk about, "How can I support you?" Because again, like, you get started and things just can be overwhelming for a new person in the building and there's a lot of new positions. So we're going to have this really nice cohort. So I hope to connect them together and then offer myself as a support as they navigate launching at Pine Hill.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
And I can just add to that. I think what's important too is to remind everybody that we took our SEL coach, and who was split across two buildings, and realized that that split position, in addition to our split adjustment counselor position, would be better used if we had an adjustment counselor at Chicory and an adjustment counselor at Pine Hill. So now we're going to have a part of the staff, you know, every day, all day, which I think will support the other counselor in the building. They could be a team together and work really well with the administration and the educators. And Naomi O'Brien, our special education coordinator for pre-K through 2, has decided to leave us for another position. At this point in time, Naomi was pre-K through 2 across the elementary schools and Laura Driscoll was pre-5 across the elementary schools. We saw this as an opportunity now that we've gotten the programs up and running and a little bit more cohesive across the buildings to split them. So our new special education coordinator that we're in the process of hiring is going to be only at Pine Hill and Laura Driscoll will be only at Chicory, which is going to add a third person to the leadership team. So it'll be Allison, Jen, and this new coordinator, which I think is going to be a huge support for our special education team moving forward. So lots of bringing it to the building as opposed to stretching people across buildings and tiring them out.
That's great.
For the focus to be Pine Hill and Chicory.
I don't think that you can overemphasize just how thoughtful your process is and it could be, in a high level, presented in any sort of communications as you're introducing the new staff to the wider community. As you just so eloquently put, they're in the classrooms. They're meeting the children. These are not just pieces of paper that are coming across your desk. You're working very hard to ensure, as you said, that these are the right fits for our kids. And any way, any time that you're communicating like, "New, look at our new teacher. His favorite lakes are such and such." It would be wonderful to weave in the background as much as you can. You know, I'm sure there's confidentiality issues and, you know, secret sauce. But it needs to be known how hard you're working to ensure that these are the best for our kids. So however you're comfortable, I would really encourage you to do that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. And I think a nod to the fact that we have had some turnover. I think we had took this conversation previously, like, it's kind of standard in education these days. Things are changing.
Yeah.
But, you know, hearing that we are making some optimizations, I think, is great to hear.
Yeah. I feel very optimistic and excited about the new folks that we're vetting through the process, yeah.
And behind the scenes, our director of student services and all of our leadership team are working with specifically special education teachers and related service providers to analyze caseloads and to try to assure equity in a constantly evolving, shifting, changing area. So there's a lot of thoughtful studies and analysis going on behind the scenes.
That's great.
Does the split of Laura and, you know, that who she will have named, splitting them, like, the sentiment we've gotten over the past couple of years is there's a lot of goodness and cross-pollinating between Chicory and Dover, recognizing that's sort of like a sensitive population. How do you ensure that while creating that sort of silo or potential for silo?
Yeah, I think, I think that's a...
That might be sort of a future question.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. But, you know, Kate McCarthy meets once a week with all four coordinators and she really does a great job of bringing them together and calibrating that way. And I think what Naomi and Laura have learned over the last few years is they've been able to work with the leaders in each building and with the teachers to kind of create a shared vision. So everybody knows what that vision is now. We just need more attention on each educator to support them to get to that vision. So having one person in each building will provide that building support. I think sometimes there was a frustration that, you know, "Oh, I need Naomi, but she's at Pine Hill today." Or, "I need Laura and she's at this building today." Now there'll be focused attention just for those folks all day, every day. And it'll be, you know, it's not just going to be principal, assistant principal. There's a three-person leadership team now, which is powerful.
Let me say it's similar with the coaches too. So we're going to have a math coach and a literacy coach at Chicory and a math coach and a literacy coach at Pine Hill. And I meet with all those coaches monthly. That ensures that we kind of have that alignment across the buildings as well.
Great. Couldn't emphasize the communications enough. You guys have done phenomenal, like, stepwise throughout, sort of to get the information out in a variety of different modes. Keep up the great work. Probably there is a world where there is too much communication, but you guys have hit the sweet spot, I think, where it's digestible and fit for purpose. So one, thank you again. Two, keep it up. I do agree that there's a lot of different ways you guys do it. Some of the stuff you've done at all-school meetings at the beginning of this year to help sort of indoctrinate folks into the ecosystem as well. So like, I think you guys are creative. I expect it to continue. So thank you. During the contract negotiations, one of the sort of themes that came out was, I'll call it like onboarding of new staff and sort of more like systems and processes to kind of, I'm not sure, make it easier, but sort of more have like a template or a standard process. I can't remember if that's one of the committees that got formed or if there was just acknowledgement that there's going to be a little bit more standardization of that. Is this, I guess, is probably the first time where that's really going to be put to the test. Do we feel like we've kind of risen to that sort of obligation or...
I'll speak a little to that and then I can turn it over to you for the mentor program. So yes, we wrote that into the contract around making sure that educators had access to all of the systems and platforms and emails that they're going to need as well as their laptop before school begins. I'm hopeful that our new director of technology, which will be interviewed this week and identified next week, will bring that knowledge to us. The good news is that all of the directors that we've met so far are bringing in have previous experience as a director of educational technology. So not just the hardware, but also the educational vision. And they all seem super strong. So I'm sure that they're going to help work with the IT team that still exists, the three folks that are amazing and have risen to the occasion and are carrying the department forward better than ever to make sure that our educators get the technical equipment that they need. And Denny is working to revamp the mentor program.
Yep. So that's another piece of it, is the new staff meetings that we have. So previously, up until this point, it's been kind of a one-size-fits-all approach. You know, everybody goes from the high school, middle school, both elementary schools, to these new staff meetings. Next year, we're separating it into two strands, an elementary strand and a secondary strand, realizing that the needs of our elementary teachers are different than our secondary teachers. So be able to really customize and tailor-fit for what our elementary teachers need. I think one of the things we're thinking about next year too is that post-COVID, some of that kind of cohort bonding, socialization stuff hasn't been happening. So we want our new staff to kind of feel that sense of belonging and have that socialization piece. So it's great to meet with student services and to talk about IPs, but at the same time, we want to kind of create a bond and shared experience with our new staff. So that's kind of something we have planned for next year as well. And we also, I think what's great is we offer teachers support in their second year teaching in the district. So when I was at the job fair at BU in April, a lot of people were coming up and asking, like, "What support do you give to new teachers?" And I said, "I think something that's really unique is that if teachers want support in their second year, then they can have mentoring opportunities." Because we realize that after your first year, it's not like all of a sudden you know everything. So to kind of create a little bit of an off-ramp for teachers, new staff, to have that support, people that I talked to candidates at the job fair were very impressed and excited about that.
That's great.
Actually, just spoke with a company this morning too. Dawn and Denny and I did a webinar. We are looking to formalize our mandatory training process. So up to date, we've been using a PowerPoint that includes lots of links about discrimination, Title IX, mandated reporting, and educators are expected to kind of go through the slides and then sign off that they've done the training. And we've done our best to make sure that they're up to date, working with our attorneys. But this is a company that does it for all schools in Massachusetts who are interested. So it is bulletproof in terms of all of the information that educators need. And there is no just skipping it and signing it. You actually have to work through it. So we're excited too that that's going to add some, I think, depth to the onboarding of new staff as well as the keeping refreshed our veterans staff.
Great.
That's great.
Recognizing you're in a new position as well and you've been sponging for the past six or however many years, I would say I would encourage you to not be afraid to kind of ask for support as well and make sure that asking for help is a strength, not a weakness.
Oh, yeah. I'm on it. I have a couple of meetings set up with principals and other districts to just start absorbing as much as I can. So not afraid. And all new principals have mentors.
Yep.
And this district is very healthy and encourages us to have mentors outside of the district.
That's great.
Cool.
Yeah.
Thank you for that update. I appreciate you guys doing that. And I think that's sort of like the prelude and I think as you kind of get into it and get your feet wet, updates, you know, periodically to kind of keep folks surprised at how things are going.
Yeah, absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it. Alright. Anything else superintendent-wise?
No, that's it. Thank you. They'll be back in June to talk about goals for next year. So the conversation will continue.
Okay.
Yeah.
Kristen, I was, any questions you had or anything? I didn't want to ignore you.
No, thank you.
Awesome. Cool. Thank you for joining as well. Becca, Christine?
All good. I have no questions.
Okay. Cool. Next up, Dawn, financial.
Yes, so you have your packet of warrant reports. So it's a little lengthier since in April, we mainly had joint meetings. So this is as of your last meeting in March. And Dennis, I would assume that we talked about this, that you'll just probably do one crossover training with whoever the appointed signer is going to be. It doesn't necessarily have to be the chair. So whenever you guys do responsibilities, just to continue that work at Town Hall and sign off on the warrants, which is very appreciated by the town.
Christine's very graciously signed in on my behalf.
So she's already trained. So she's already trained. Perfect.
Very good.
Exactly. So on your monthly reports, you have your statement of appropriations as of April 30th. And the good news is, this is good news, I think, that there's no new bold information as far as on the operations, which means we are continuing to operate where we thought we were going to be. And I guess that's even more positive news on the added district side of things, seeing that we were already running a little bit of a deficit. We've maintained where we are. We've been able to know that within our funds that we control, we do not have to go forward to the town and ask for any additional appropriations. Right now, we are over budgeted by just about $90,000 in added district tuition and transportation and we have about $95,000 of unappropriated circuit breaker funds. And so we will absorb any surplus we have in our operating funds because there are some salary savings that won't change. So that will absorb some of the added districts. We probably won't have to hopefully use all of the circuit breaker. And then again, that starts building us a little bit of a cushion in circuit breaker that we did not have last year because we had to wipe everything out. So I always recommend we have something unappropriated in the circuit breaker fund to help us for when things, unexpected placements, come up during the school year. So hopefully, we'll get back into that mode of operation. Any questions on that? I will say, I've noted in your report, obviously, that Sherburne Town Meeting took place last week and I'll talk about the capital approval, but also, obviously, the budget was approved as well. And, you know, there was appreciation for the work, the town, and the school groups. So that is always well appreciated to hear that, you know, we look at it as a collegial process. And I think that we were not, our increases were not out of line with what the other departments were seeing. So we weren't sort of... So we weren't sort of like the anomaly of saying, oh, the schools are taking all of our money. So that's always reassuring too. And it was a very, I think, cooperative process this year. I personally enjoyed working with Sherburne Advisory. I thought they were very thoughtful. And I think that that outside, those outside questions only makes us, do our budget work better. And so I appreciate their, their input and their insight coming from the outside. So I think it builds a really good budget process. On the capital, so it was approved, our HVAC for the three units. The last hurdle will be the voting, because it's being borrowed. So there will be a ballot question on Tuesday. So please go vote in support of it, because we're not really done until that takes place. But then we are working on the next step, which is securing a contract for the design work and the bid process. And we do have one in hand that I'm working with the town of Sherburne to see how we can go about making that happen. And as we get more information, we will share that with you. But just to reiterate, so we, the project is about approximately 400,000. The school committee has committed 100,000 from the building rental fund and 300,000 was appropriated by the town of Sherburne. So we'll get that up and running. The next step of this was looking at the facilities assessment. And so we've had one meeting with the architects with the working group. We have a second meeting scheduled with just the working group to really start plotting out next steps in the decision-making process. So I think the report, and we'll share it in June, is giving us sort of a, it's not a clear path, because there are still a lot of good things about the building. And so I think that's part of the working group. And at the working group, refresh your memory, is the town administrator, someone from advisory, someone from the select board, and then school committee and administration. So you've got all the parties at the table working towards this. So we know that we'll have support depending on, and they're having input into the decision-making process. So we were, we have another meeting next week. So we should have some good, you know, basic information, not the answer, but some good moving forward information for you at the June meeting.
On that, so we made the decision, the facilities subcommittee, which was me, so I'm from the school committee on that sort of process. So we can work to figure out what does that, kind of going forward to make sure continues.
Right. And then I think we were thinking, you know, as a citizen, if you are still interested, it'd be great to have you continue, because we probably will start building a team that has more than just, you know, school committee and personnel. So I think that, that the knowledge that you've gained would be helpful to continue if, if we can make that work for you.
So hang on to that nameplate.
In my email address. Yeah, makes sense. I think the thing that I've kind of recognized here is that, as Dawn had kind of mentioned, this is a really big decision, right? And I think everybody sort of went to it thinking foregone conclusion, we're going to do this assessment, they're going to say this building is kind of like, you know, it's gone, gone past its useful life, but that squarely is not the sentiment, I think, coming from the, from the assessment. And there's a lot of different variability around how to evaluate it, how to think about it, what funds are available, both within the town and outside. I know that you guys are working to kind of hoover up a bunch of information from others about their similar exercises. So I think three quarters of the problem is going to be like trying to figure out how to organize in our collective mind's eye and having a clear, you know, cogent message in terms of like, what is it that we want to achieve and how do we get there? And having that sort of North Star vision is going to be important. Otherwise, it's going to be, well, it's not grounded in sort of like a goal. It's grounded in just a bunch of wants and hopes and desires. And that's going to land at a lot of costs and maybe misaligned sort of end results. So that was sort of my sort of perspective, kind of coming out of the meeting with the, the assessment.
Right, right. I mean, there's, there's a lot of questions to be answered, but at least we've got a good starting point. And the fact that it's on the table to be discussed, I think many view as a really good thing. So hopefully only future benefits will happen one way or the other to, you know, to sort of bring up Pine Hill to sort of 21st century learning environment.
Some more to come later. But to bring it back to this, the 300 grand that's going into the town vote next week, that is totally separate. That's AC at the building, not the entire building, just sort of some strategic parts.
Three main areas, right.
We did a presentation on that.
We did, yeah.
Two meetings ago, maybe. So that's what
Right. So the just auditorium, library and cafeteria are the three. That need, obviously the auditorium needs a new air handler anyway. So that was actually an easy sale, sell to people that that already needed to be completed. And the, you know, I think that no matter what we do, it's still going to be a long, it's going to be a long, it's not going to build a new school, you know, tomorrow, so that there's still life in these, because that became contentious debate at the Capitol, where we presented to advisory, because they didn't want to invest in this if they were going to walk away from it. So we said, there's enough life left that we're probably going to be in that building, that we're going to make use of the equipment. So that is something that luckily didn't come up when we were talking at town meeting, but that is, was an initial concern. But the life of this, we get enough value out of this, that it would make sense.
Under either scenario, build a whole new building, renovate what we've got.
Right.
Something in between, whatever, like
But this made sense, yep.
Good money on a, on a good use.
Right.
Recognizing that it's beautiful out, any thoughts on AC handling and temperature for?
Yeah, we'll watch the temperatures. This is a little bit of a heat, I wouldn't say a heat wave, it's a little warm these two days. But looking, and believe me, I look at the weather, the 10-day forecast is all like low, yeah, high 60s, low 70s.
Understood, but it kind of begs that.
Yeah, but we can turn, we can turn that need around to bring in the commercial units like in a day or two.
Okay.
And I think the experience last year was that the trip to the library maybe wasn't the best option.
Educationally.
I believe is where I remember that bad day.
Climate control, beautiful.
Yeah. Okay, so it'll be interesting. What if we do, sorry. The question I'm asking is if we need to cancel school for heat like we did last year, do we have to make that day up or the last day is the last day?
Yeah, the last day is the last day. I think it would have to be like 90 degrees for three days, because that's where we become where we can't be in that building anymore. Right now, if you look at the morning, late night temperatures, it's getting to the 50s. That relieves some of the pressure in that building and brings the fresh air in. So that's usually, and the fact that we get out at 2 o'clock actually is very helpful.
Okay.
Sounds good. Any questions on budget? Anything else? Nope. Cool. Discussion items, the, the student handbook first read.
Yeah, I can just give a really brief update. I know I sent you the changes. I'll kind of just highlight two of the big things was really Jen Ryan and myself tried to go through and think about, how can we shift our core values to make them student-friendly language so that it feels more approachable for our kids? So made some minor tweaks in language around our core values to promote what we're calling the three Rs, respectful, responsible and ready to grow. So just trying to kind of promote this, you know, I think core values can kind of feel adult language and we want to bring it to the kid level. So that was a change. We wanted to make sure that the handbook also had so that families, when they see that, understand that it's a student-first kind of core value. Other things were kind of minor tweaks. And then really ensuring we added the line this all four schools did about restorative justice and that we're valuing that as a practice. And wanted to ensure that that was part of our kind of discipline portion of our handbook so that it's highlighted as a practice that we use at Pine Hill.
And also from the, the legal perspective, we had our attorney look at all four handbooks just to make sure that nothing has changed in the law or how we proceed with ethics or protocol, and there were no changes.
Sorry, I feel like I'm full of questions tonight. I know previously last year, there were a couple of emails that were sent out with photos of not students, but people and things around Pine Hill. Does the handbook say anything about people taking photos and sharing them and should it? Is that the right spot for it? I'm curious if that is something that's been discussed. And it's probably applicable at all three schools, but
Right. We've, we've talked a little bit about it with our attorney. We haven't put anything in the handbook yet. We can certainly see if that makes sense. I think that, you know, we as educators and people who work in the building know that there are students who are not supposed to be photographed and shared. What's difficult is when we open the building to all school meeting, or we have international night, people bring their cameras, we can't control what they do. We can certainly encourage and ask them to be respectful, but, you know, just as you are when you're, you know, walking down the street or in the, in the grocery store. People can take what they want. But we can certainly see if there's some sort of guidance that we can use or language that we can continue to use to remind people that we're working with, with children.
Okay.
The building is already recorded, right?
The outside is.
The outside?
Yeah, the middle and high school inside too.
Any other question? So that's the first read. We'll have a second read. And that's when we would vote on any updates. We've gone through the cooling and building update. The next two items are items that we need to vote on. First is the second read of the policy manual. So that was presented, I think, at our last meeting. And the updates there are mainly to align with MASC, but I don't know if there's any other comments that you guys wanted to add?
We can, so we are fully in a position to vote on the first three sections tonight. The work continues with a meeting on Friday, but I think hopefully after the meeting on Friday, we'll have everything where it should be and then we can vote on that.
Is it better to vote as one package or split it up?
I would vote all three together as a committee.
Yeah.
Just the three that you already have.
Yes, yes, not the other hot, yes, yes.
All right. Were there any questions on, on that?
Maybe just as a reminder, the group is similar to the updates to the student handbook, a lot of like, you know, tweaks in language to make it more inclusive or tweaks in language to clarify things, to specify things. And we've been working with Alison Malum, who's been a wonderful resource and guide, just ensuring that we are on the same page as our peer districts and peer school systems. And obviously, you know, in accordance with any laws and regulations.
With that, I'd request a motion to approve the policy manual as summarized by Christine, included in our, in our package.
Christine Walsh, yes.
Great. Thank you, Christine. And a second?
Becca Hammond, yes.
Thank you, Becca. Any discussion? Thank you for all the work that you've done on this.
Thank you.
And we'll continue. So roll call vote. First, Kristin?
Kristin Aberle, yes.
Great. Becca?
Becca Hammond, yes.
Christine Walsh, yes.
Dennis Quant, yes. Great. School committee minutes from March 12th were included in the package. I did not see any edits that were needed. And then donations were the other. I think there's a summary of the donation in the package as well.
From the CSA, for teacher grants, yeah.
For teacher grants. Anything that you wanted to add or anything else that came across?
Just we're grateful again for them to offer opportunities for our teachers to try new things.
Great. So I'd request a motion to approve the school committee minutes and the donations as one consent item.
Christine Walsh, yes. Becca Hammond, second.
Discussion? Kristin?
Kristin Aberle, yes.
Becca?
Becca Hammond, yes.
Christine Walsh, yes.
Dennis Quant, yes. Informational items, the newsletters from the past couple, I guess back in March. And then the regional and Dover school committee minutes, just for, for reference. I will not be leading the June 4th meeting unless something goes terribly sideways at the meeting next week or at the vote next week. But get those in and we'll organize them to get to the, to the agenda with, with them. Whomever is identified as the, as the lead going forward.
That said, I think it's important to recognize the service that you've provided and the leadership to the school committees as well as our students and staff. It's been wonderful to work with you. Amanda Brown will be stepping down as well. And we've loved working with Amanda and all that she's given to this district over time. So thank you. You'll be missed, but you'll be on the building committee, so. Together.
Definition of voluntold, and I will tell you
On camera, it was voluntary.
My arm is appropriately twisted. I wanted you to know that the margarita line item in the budget was not passed for every, every afternoon from here on out. I lobby for it. You need something to do while, while someone's planning. But yes, thank you to Amanda as well, who can't be here tonight.
Christine might have something, yeah.
I do just want to say, and I know that we have, we're already running behind, but I did want to recognize the incredible volunteer leadership of both Dennis and Amanda. They have brought such incredibly unique perspectives, knowledge, passion, dedication to our children. Throughout the time that I've worked with them and throughout the time that our community has worked with them, they have remained curious about what is in the best interest for our children. They've kept open minds, they've asked questions, they've consulted experts, they've audited other communities. They define what we hope a school committee member would be, and our kids are better for it. So
And our teachers.
Yes. We are so deeply, deeply grateful for the two of you. This is not just when you show up at meetings and you ask pointy questions. There are hours of dedication, subcommittee meetings, planning, reading, reviewing, questioning that goes into this job. And you are both beacons of light for our town. So thank you both so much.
So little gifts, an apple for your desk and a reminder of our core values.
Those are the core values. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the kind words. It's been great working with everybody. I won't go far. I may not be at this meeting every, every month or so, but I will be hanging out in the hallways.
Public speak.
Public, that's right.
And speaking with other superintendents about the building process, whether we go new building or renovation, I'm hearing that the number of public meetings is in the 70 range, so get ready.
So I'm ramping up my Thank you. It's been very educational for me and I appreciate all the time that you guys dedicate to this. Literally is the reason people move to these towns and we are incredibly grateful and indebted to everything that you guys do on a day in, day out. Thank you. And to the school committee, nice job. Thank you for persevering. And we get to spend a lot of time together, but I appreciate it. So thank you, guys. With that, I think we can adjourn by unanimous consent. All in favor? Great. So we're done at 6:20 on May 7.